Welcome to our September 11th regularly scheduled board meeting, but I want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to pause as we gather today to commemorate the 22nd anniversary of the worst attack on American soil, September 11, 2001. The World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and the field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. On this day, 22 years ago, history reflects how America changed forever. How 2,977 families were changed forever and were innocent people who was someone's daughter, mother, son, father, lost their lives. How the brave first responders who sacrificed everything died, carrying out the true meaning of their oath, commitment, and dedication. Today, we say thank you to our local first responder heroes who came out to help us at the Muskogee County School District commemorate the sacrifice of that tragic day on September 11th. And we thank you for your service, your dedication, and your commitment. Thank you to our community leaders as well for all that you do and for taking time to pause for this solemn occasion.
What an awesome turnout, awesome turnout. We're proud as a joint venture to help assist with the 9/11 tribute and to lead today's ceremony or tribute. Our narrator is Jasmine Martinez from Shaw High School. Let's please give her a welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and that was Lieutenant Colonel Sanders.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Jasmine Martinez. Dr. David Lewis Superintendent of Education, Muskogee School District Board, educators, Mayor Henderson, citizens of Columbus, first responders, armed forces service recruiters, distinguished guests, ROTC cadets. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Please stand for the pledge. The junior leadership corps, cadets Abigail Copeland and Bernuria Jackson from East Columbus Magnet Academy will lead us in the pledge.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, the invocation will be given by Cadet Carol McKay from Columbus High School.
Please join me in prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we are so incredibly grateful for this beautiful day. We are thankful for the freedoms we enjoy and the incredible people who keep our freedoms safe. We meet here today to memorialize one of the saddest days in American history, but also to honor the brave people who gave their lives to save others. We honor them and their sacrifice in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
We will now have remarks from our awesome Superintendent of Education, Dr. David Lewis.
She's going for an A. Today, September 11th, commonly known as 9/11, marks the 22nd anniversary of the day that four coordinated suicide terrorist attacks were carried out by Al Qaeda against the United States on Tuesday, September 11th, 2001. That morning, 19 terrorists hijacked four commercial airliners scheduled to travel from the New England and mid-Atlantic regions of the East Coast to California. The hijackers crashed the first two planes into the Twin Towers of the World Trade Center in New York City and aimed the next two flights toward targets in or near Washington, D.C. in an attack on the nation's capital. The third team succeeded in crashing into the Pentagon in Arlington, Virginia, while the fourth plane crashed in rural Pennsylvania following a passenger revolt. Most of us remember exactly where we were when we heard the news that day. Some heard about it on the radio as they drove to work. Some watched the news unfold from television. But educators and school leaders who were in classrooms full of children likely remember trying to figure out just how to best support our students. For me personally, and I assume many of you, I remember the day with chilling clarity as I watched the events unfold in disbelief, side by side with my students and teachers in a high school where I served as principal. Since that horrific day 22 years ago, our way of life has been impacted forever. In addition to nearly 3,000 lives lost that fateful day, thousands more have been lost by the brave men and women who served in our military and defended our nation and its people during the global war on terror. It's also important to remember that 9/11 is not over. It happened on a particular day, September 11th, 2001. However, over 6,000 first responders have died of injuries and health issues attributed to their work in the weeks, months, and years since then at the pile, a reference to the site where the Twin Towers once stood. At one time, it was hard to believe that we had students too young to remember the events of September 11th. Now, none of the students in our schools and some of our colleagues are not old enough to recall that catastrophe. As we reflect, remember, and honor those who perished on that September morning 22 years ago, as well as the thousands we lost due to their heroism, sacrifice, and dedication to duty. It is incumbent upon us as Americans, educators, and those who support public education to teach this generation and those to come about 9/11, its heroes, and the impact it had on America. Tonight's program is evidence of the Muskogee County School District's commitment to doing so. I would like to take this opportunity to thank and commend Lieutenant Colonel Sanders, our JROTC staff, his staff, and Ms. Karen Jones for planning and coordinating this program, as well as our special guests and honorees for being with us tonight. Of those I'd like to recognize, Columbus Mayor Skip Henderson, Office of Representative Stanford Bishop, his representative Kenneth Cuts, CPD Assistant Chief Joyce Dent-Finlaypatrick, Sergeant Shellings of the CPD, Chief Gregory Arp, MCSD Police Chief, Sheriff's Office Major Lockett and Major Strange, Chief Scarpa of the Columbus Fire and EMS, Chris Kelly, who is representing Stanford Bishop's office as the Field Representative, Deputy Chief Harrell, Deputy Chief Nobles, Deputy Chief Hord, Fire Marshal Scholl, Deputy Chief Smith, as well as Armed Services recruiters from the Army, Staff Sergeant Eric Benton, and Marine recruiters Cameron Kilgore and Jason May. As well as, I want to recognize any of our other first responders who may have been here or military personnel who I was not able to catch your name, but I do want to say thank you for being part of us this evening. And I would also like to take this opportunity to just say that I distinctly remember, as I said, that morning on 9/11, as a principal, watching the events unfold, going about the day, counting homecoming ballots, as a matter of fact. When my secretary came in and said there's been an accident in New York, probably similar messages you may have received at your place of work. And I'll never forget the look on her face when she came in shortly thereafter and said, "It's not an accident, there's been another plane hit, another one of the Twin Towers in New York City." So, I could not be prouder of our students who are participating in this and other commemoration events that help us, help those who are too young to remember the sacrifice of 9/11 in our country's history. And that in our darkest hour, we all came together as one America, regardless of race, religion, color, background, or political affiliation. May God bless the United States of America and all who serve and protect her, past, present, and future. Thank you.
Next, Mayor Skip Henderson will provide remarks.
Good evening. First, let me say that it is an absolute privilege to be here with the Muskogee County School Board. I want to thank Dr. Lewis and Chair Pat Hughley-Green, as well as all the other board members, for making sure that this goes on every year, right? That we're not forgetting, that we're not allowing another level of students to come in without hearing about some of the darkest moments in our country's history. You heard Dr. Lewis talk about the event itself. And I remember where I was, we were in a council meeting. It was a Tuesday morning, and we had just started the council meeting and some buzz started going around the counselors that there'd been a terrible accident. And a few of us ducked in the back to see that we, a plane had accidentally, we thought, flown into the North Tower. About 15 minutes later, Jack Rogers, who was Mayor Pro Tem, he was handed a note, and he went outside to talk with a deputy because Mayor Bobby Peters was absent that day, so the Mayor Pro Tem was running the meeting. He came back in, and I'll never forget, he said, "It appears that the United States is under attack." And we were. You know, each generation seems like there's at least one, sometimes multiple unfortunately, defining moments that everybody, as the superintendent pointed out, that everybody can remember where they were, right? They can even remember what they were feeling, they can remember the confusion. We, my generation had that. I mean, the Vietnam War, my dad participated in that. But seeing that war take place on television, a war being fought out on television for the first time, that was a huge defining moment for that generation. I remember the, when the Japanese attacked Pearl Harbor. I'm really disappointed y'all didn't laugh at that because I know I look kind of old, this job's aged me a little bit, but I wasn't around when Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. But my point in saying that is I remember it because my parents and my grandparents and my teachers told me about it. We need to make sure we continue to pass that story down so that the children who are children, if you're under 25, you don't remember a thing about that, except what you have learned from listening to others. We've got to continue to perpetuate the stories that are real. We've got to continue to let our young people know that one of the reasons, and there are a multitude of reasons that Al Qaeda gave for that attack. But as our president stated at the time, President Bush, one of the primary reasons that our country felt like we were targeted was because they envied our freedoms. They could not attain what we attain because we have a democracy. They could not attain what we attain because they don't have freedom of religion. They couldn't attain what we could attain because if you don't look a certain way, if you aren't of a certain gender, you don't get treated the same, you don't get the same opportunities. They could not get what we have, so they attacked it. What they didn't realize is the way we would react to that. The global war on terror began that day, and we were just talking to Kenneth Cuts from the Congressman's office about attending the global war on terror banquet for the Gold Star families the other night. Thank God, there were no names added to the memorial this year. But those parents, those brothers, those sisters, those relatives of the soldiers that gave their lives in this struggle, this will never end for them. 9/11 was the beginning of a completely different way of life for those folks. In addition to our heroes in the armed forces though, there's never been a more incredible display of bravery than the domestic soldiers, our police, our sheriff, our school resource officers, and particularly our fire department. Three, I think it was 343 fire off, firemen, lost their lives that day. People running into a building that they had to know wasn't, wasn't going to be there in the next hour. Going in while everybody else is coming down and refusing to leave because they were still trying to get to people up higher. Now, I hope that lesson continues to be shared with our children because they need to know that the people that wear the uniforms here in their communities, they're not just heroes, because really, they're just like you and me, right? When they take that uniform off, as I mentioned in the church the other day, they're out there shopping, they're taking their kids to school, they're going to recreate and to do everything that we do. But when they put that uniform on, they're part of that few that have earned the right to wear that uniform because they're going into situations with no other thought in their head but to protect the people who are dealing with that at that particular time. So my challenge to all of you here is to remember the feeling you had in the months that followed 9/11. Remember the patriotism, remember the pride at being an American. Regardless, as the superintendent so capably put, regardless of your, your race, your religion, your gender, your sexual orientation, it didn't matter. You were fortunate enough to be an American citizen. So remember that because you couldn't go down a subdivision for the next several months without seeing it lined with flags. You, churches were full, you had people who hadn't talked to each other in months or years, reaching out, see how they're doing, how they, how they hanging in there. That's what we need to do as Americans every day. So my challenge to you all, reach inside you and find that patriotism, find that kindness, find that empathy, find that pride of being an American citizen. Hang on to it and share it with somebody who's having trouble digging inside and finding that pride. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to share with you all, God bless all of you.
At this time, Mr. Kenneth Cuts from the Office of Congressman Stanford Bishop will provide remarks.
Good evening. To Superintendent Lewis, to Chair Hughley-Green, to all of the members of the school board, to all of the personnel, to all of the students that have gathered here today. I'm happy to be here on behalf along with my colleague Chris Kelly on behalf of Congressman Sanford Bishop in our second district congressional office. Congressman Bishop sends his regards and regrets that he could not be here today, but we are happy to be here on his behalf. There are some events in history that if we're old enough, we all remember. If we're old enough, people remember the assassination of John F. Kennedy on November 22nd, 1963 in Dallas, Texas. If we're old enough, we remember the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on April the 4th, 1968 in Memphis, Tennessee. If we're old enough, we remember when the Challenger exploded in January of 1986. And if we're old enough, we remember what happened on September the 11th, 2001. Almost 3,000 of our fellow citizens who were going about their daily lives, whether they were going to their place of business, whether they were traveling on a business trip, or going on a vacation, or going to visit a relative, or young people who thought that they had the rest of their lives ahead of them. On that day, we lost almost 3,000 of our beloved citizens. And they were targeted just for being Americans. You see, all of us on this Patriot's Day, all of us that are still here, we have to understand what it means to be an American. We're unique, and when you're unique, people want to be like you or they hate everything about you. And so out of September the 11th, 2011, 2001, came Operation Enduring Freedom. And we had men and women who in our armed services who also gave the ultimate sacrifice. The unique thing about being an American is not that we have a democratic form of government. It's not that we're racially diverse. It's not that we are a wealthy country. It's not that we have an abundance of natural resources. It's not that we have freedom of press, of freedom of assembly, of freedom of religion. The unique thing about being a United States citizen is the fact that we have all of these things in one country. And we have men and women who will fight and who will die to protect those things. That's what makes us unique as Americans. And so the mayor had a challenge. He encouraged us to always remember this. He encouraged us to always remember this day and to always pass this day down to future generations. I have a challenge as well. In the aftermath of nine eleven, as has already been stated, it didn't matter what race you were. It didn't matter what religion you were. It didn't matter your economic status in life. All that mattered is that we were Americans united in a common purpose. We've got to get back to that. We've got to come back to that. So the greatest tribute we can pay to all of those who have given their lives is to serve our communities. Treat our neighbors the right way. Love people as brothers and sisters. That's what it's all about. That's what being American is all about. And so I end my remarks with a quote from the great English poet, John Donne. "There's no need to ask for whom the bell tolls. It tolls for me, tolls for you, tolls for all of us." Thank you and God bless you.
Next, we would like to recognize Muskogee County School District graduates that went on to pursue a career in law enforcement and fire and EMS. In February twenty twenty-three, CTAE held the Third Public Safety Career Expo at each high school. CTAE Partner Agencies, Muskogee County Sheriff's Office, Care EMS, Columbus Fire Department, and Columbus Police Department each participated. Graduating class of twenty twenty-three seniors are invited to meet with representatives of each agency, provide resumes, and learn about applying to these agencies upon graduation. Cadets LaMarcus Hall and Ulysses Hernandez. This year, two students have been hired as cadets at the Columbus Police Department. Cadets LaMarcus Hall of Kendrick High School and Ulysses Hernandez of Spencer High School. These students met with Sergeant Schelling of CPD at the Career Fair and completed the rigorous application and interview process for the cadet positions. We are proud to present Columbus Police Department Cadets LaMarcus Hall of Kendrick High School and Ulysses Hernandez of Spencer High School. Cadet Ryan Seto. In twenty twenty-three, Northside High School celebrated their first class of students who graduated from the firefighting academy. Columbus Fire and EMS practices a close partnership with the Northside Program, providing equipment, mentorship, and training opportunities with the students. Ryan Seto participated in the rigorous application and interview process and successfully passed the demanding Combat Challenge Physical Fitness Test. CTAE is proud to introduce firefighter cadet Ryan Seto, Northside Class of twenty twenty-three. Trooper Jacquez Willis. In twenty eighteen, Trooper Willis graduated from Kendrick High School. Trooper Willis always had a passion for helping others. After attending Columbus Technical College, Trooper Willis' decision to become a Georgia State Patrol was a genuine career choice. In twenty twenty-one, Trooper Willis attended the Georgia State Patrol Academy and graduated in twenty twenty-two. Class number one-one-one, we are proud to present Trooper Jacquez Willis.
At this time, I would like to reflect on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Patriot Day is observed in the United States on September eleventh to commemorate the lives of those who died in the two thousand and one terrorist attacks on the World Trade Center in New York City and the Pentagon in Virginia, and those who perished when the hijacked United Airlines Flight ninety-three crashed in Pennsylvania. This day also recognizes those who died attempting to rescue people trapped by the attacks, our first responders. Today marks twenty-two years ago, the tragedy of September eleventh, two thousand and one. Many of you remember where you were and what you were doing on that horrific day. However, I was not yet born. I was born in two thousand and six. We join together today to compassionately honor and remember the two thousand nine hundred seventy-five individuals who were killed on September eleventh, two thousand and one in the terrorist attacks on America, as well as those who were injured during the attacks and the many who rose in service in response. The first responders, volunteers, rescue and recovery workers, and health professionals. We stand together today in the Muskogee County School District Boardroom as we stand in unity. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, please stand for the placing of the wreath by Dr. David Lewis and assisting him is Cadet Mia Ellis from Shaw High School and Cadet Alicia House from Carver High School and playing up tabs by Cadet Cleveland Walker from Kendrick High School.
Well, we began our work session with commemorating the twenty-second year of September eleventh because we will never, never forget. And so we're gonna pick back up with our meeting and go to our next item, which is the public agenda. And we do have a speaker scheduled for the public agenda, Mr. David Young. And while you're making your way, I will go ahead and, and read that "All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the board may meet in executive sessions. Speaker's remarks should be directed to the Board of Education and shall be limited to five minutes. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. If an individual desires to speak, they may contact the superintendent's office to be placed on the agenda. The board meeting or work session is not the appropriate place to address either criticisms of particular employee, of particular employees or individual parent complaints when such complaints have not been first addressed and brought to the attention of the appropriate administrator for resolutions. Citizens are encouraged to follow our normal channels to address individual parent complaints or problems when that's with the superintendent's office or at your school." And with that, Mr. Young, I want to say welcome, but let me see if I can figure out how to get your mic on. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My wife and I have come and spoke a little bit about some of the policies that are being implemented over at Shaw High School with regards to bags and purses. My wife spoke here about two weeks ago. After the meeting, I heard some discussions about the clear bags that she was complaining about, clear purses that are required of the students and that there are free ones available. I don't think our message is getting across. We don't want a free bag. We don't want anything from the school district for free. These rules are beginning to get bizarre. Every year, we're inundated with new rules and new policies. You have to buy a bookbag now. You know, you don't have to buy it. You've got to have a clear one. We want to see what's in it. You've got to have a clear purse. I noticed every, all the ladies on the school board came in tonight with your purses. You'd be asked to leave that out in the locker. Don't even bring it in here. The men and women on the, from the district here, some of you brought your own bags in, your own purses. That would not be allowed. You cannot have it in here. You have to go put it in a locker. That, that, that'd be odd, wouldn't it? You wouldn't want to do that. Well, neither do our kids. When I went to Shaw, we had a bookbag. When my wife went to Shaw, she had her purse. We didn't have to have a clear one so everybody could see what was in it. But every year, this is getting more ridiculous. And I've questioned, why do you have these policies? And it's to keep our kids safe, they're telling us. Well, why are my kids in an unsafe environment that requires them to have a clear purse? I'm hoping the school board can be our representative and say enough of this. Our kids are gonna have some normalcy in the school. Let them have their purses. I've heard about the dispensing things in the girls bathrooms that's supposed to solve that. Well, my daughter doesn't use those. Those personal items aren't good for her. It's not gonna accommodate her. But she has to have a clear bag and a clear bookbag, clear purse, excuse me, and a clear bookbag so everybody can see what she's bringing in. And she can't even have it in the classroom. You got to go leave it in your locker. Well, her locker's all the way at the other end of the school. She's got to go to class over here. So it's not convenient. It just gets more ridiculous. I don't have a problem with the school. We love Dr. Hendrick. But I don't agree with all these policies. I think it's ridiculous. And I'm hoping you all can start setting some policy, have some discussion about what you're gonna do about that. Other schools don't have that policy. I'm not saying all the schools don't. But if it's about keeping them safe, then let's make this district wide. Only clear bags. You can't have a bookbag, only clear stuff. Let's bring it in. And I think your phones will be ringing off the hook from parents saying, "What the heck's going on?" And that's why we're here. We're getting tired of it too. The cell phones. You can't have a cell phone. I called one of the other schools just not too far from my house and said, "Hey, I just want to know, can my kids bring a phone to school?" Absolutely. Can they have it in the hallway? Sure they can. Can they have it in the cafeteria? The lady at the office said, "Well, yeah, that's where they like to take pictures and be teenagers." Oh, boy, wouldn't that be nice for my kids to do? You can't have it. If you get caught with your phone, you're in trouble. You're, you're, you might get suspended. I had to go to school twice last year to get my kid's phone back because they took it out to check a text message. One time I get home, I told my son, "Here's your phone." I had to go get it. "When did you crack your screen?" "That's not my phone." "This isn't your phone?" "No." "Well, whose is it?" We had to find out. They gave us the wrong phone. So they're, they're not even doing a good job policing this. They're giving the wrong, who's gonna be responsible for that if that kid said, "I cracked his, uh, screen"? I guarantee the district's not gonna say, "Well, we'll pay for that." But no, the kid said, "No, it was already cracked." I said, "Whew, thank goodness." But I questioned about the phones and I'm gonna tell you what I was told. This is from the principal, her response for why the phones, phone policies are the way it is. And she said, "The presence of cell phones in our schools has negative impacts on discipline and academics. There's excessive cheating, there's cyberbullying, which has caused an increase in mental health stability and increased suicide in our teens, and an increase in discipline issues." Well, then, it sounds like we don't need phones anywhere in this district. How about no phones across the district? But that's not the way it is. It's only, it's certain schools. And we're told, "Well, that's just the climate and the culture of the school." What, what kind of climate and culture are my kids involved with? I want to hear some discussion from the school about what y'all gonna do about it. And I want to hear some, can y'all set the policies for this and make the rules so it's the same across the district? That's what I'd like to hear. I'm hoping y'all have some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. We appreciate you.
Ms. Buckner. Mike. Okay, item four point zero one. I think this is Cyford. I don't know if you're gonna talk about it or... But anyway, it's a, we have a letter, a letter which is designed to provide, I'm sorry. It's a H thing right here. A letter that's designed to provide our school, school board with information items aligned to the vision of teaching and learning support of the district's improvement plan. Now, this is something that we've been asked for, for a long time, you know?
Monthly newsletter, basically.
Okay. It's just a monthly? Okay.
Yes, absolutely. This is, this is something we want to provide, give some high-level items that are going on, district practices from, from our division. And this particular newsletter, we, we want to generally highlight three main areas. This one, we highlighted personalized learning, which we implemented, have been implementing. But we're, there's a couple of items in here talking about the How I Learned Best Survey, which you're aware of. We did implement the, the Digital Learning Journal, which we're excited about. And we're also, it talks about the partnership with GLICSE or the Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement that we're working with as a part of the great initiative. So, and also our Muskogee TAP program, which focuses on teacher certification, doing a great job with that. We have seventeen individuals in our cohort this year, this semester. So we're looking forward to getting those, those individuals certified and ready for, they're already in classroom teaching right now. And then you'll hear more about this as we go throughout the year. You heard a little bit about it last month about the Rollins Institute, the Center for Language and Literacy. We're partnering with, with them on our literacy initiative, especially in our K through three program. And we're a part of that organization and partnering with them. There are twelve other districts in the, in the state that are partnering with them. It's free. in the, in the state that are partnering with them. It's free. And we went through initial training on August 16th and 17th, and excited about that opportunity. We have 10 schools involved in that. You'll see the schools listed in the newsletter. We have some redelivery training going on this week on the 13th and 14th for those individual schools, as well as we have the initial training for those school teams on September 19th through the 21st, which is next week. So, we're really excited about being a part of that and as a part of our P3 initiative to really focus our attention on literacy and math skills in our early grades. You also have some department updates and some trainings that are going on. Again, this is designed to provide you and the public information about what we're doing with regards to teaching and learning.
I have a quick, funny digital learning journal. I hope this doesn't get back to my son. I'll probably be in trouble. But apparently, when he was working on his the other day, he kind of paused and he asked his teacher. He said, could a member of the school board read my journal? And I think she was messing with him because I don't have any idea how to go look at his journal. And she said, yes, I think your mother could. And he goes, and apparently, he deleted some items. So, he was cutting his tracks. With that, though, I have to leave because the same child is having his first JV football game tonight. So, I hung in as long as I can, but I've got to go there now. So, good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Let me ask a question. So, the newsletter, I was reading here. It says, the newsletter in support of the district's improvement plan. Now, the newsletter actually is a letter that keeps us aware of what you're doing in the teaching and learning. Okay. And I know what you're doing. It's, of course, it's in accordance to our teach, your improvement plan, but I was thinking, so it's not going to be matched with action items on the improvement plan? It's not going to be real technical, or it's just going to be what we're doing in the, okay?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, it says improvement. This thing says this is going to be support of the districts. I know what we're doing is important of the improvement plan. I was just wondering if it was going to be specific to match what, like, the items that he read, would it match whatever, however, the action item, like, let's say it's 1.5, you know, if it's going to be that?
Yeah. I would say, in, in, in some cases, the things that we have listed here will identify action items that we have assigned in the district improvement plan based on the goals.
Would that be noted on the, on the, on the letter?
I'm sorry?
Would that be noted on the letter?
We, we haven't identified those particular goals or action items that are listed on the...
Yeah. I was just trying to, trying to get, understand it of what the letter is. So, see, if, if it was, in my opinion, making us aware, connecting us to, back to the improvement plan, then it would, whatever you're discussing, or whatever is happening during that time, the items that you're discussing, it would be matched with our improvement plan, with the action items on the improvement plan. I was just...
So, you'd like us to list the actual items that we have?
That would be great if you would do that because we're supposed to be doing that anyway, and we won't have to look it up. I'm just saying. That would just be excellent.
Again, it was just a communication tool to try to give you some awareness of what we, what we're doing in division, teaching, learning, and how it supports the district improvement plan.
Now, because this is a newsletter, you may not be able to link it back, but at some point during our education committee, you need to link the, whatever you're presenting in the newsletter, link it back to the student achievement.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the newsletter is just for the highlights. Right. But we do need the continuous connecting that back with the student achievement.
And we'll highlight district improvement plan in our later sessions. We'll, we'll actually review the district improvement plan for you.
I was, I was going by what's stated on this. I was going by, I was going by what's stated on the background and the rationale. According to the rationale, that's where I was coming from. If they were doing this or if they were just telling us what they were doing, updating us.
Sure. She said, make it match. If you write it down, provide it.
Because we're supposed to be doing it. They're just helping us. You know, we actually have to go back and do it ourselves, you know? That would just do real great if you would do it for us.
I just have a question about the strategic plan. And at the bottom, you do have checked off the items related to it. It says strategic plan, and it has learning, equity and culture, high-quality staff, operations, communications, and transparent accountability. So, that helps?
That's a part of the...
Pinpoint it.
The Dr. Lewis's strategic plan that we have in place. We do highlight that. But I understand what you're saying as far as the district improvement plan. Again, we'll, we'll provide information regarding the district improvement plan and where we are. As we talked about last time, we'll make sure that we do quarterly updates.
So, this is my question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, my question is, when is the last time the school improvement plan was revised? And then, how often? Because I know it's a living, breathing document, and so each year, we revisit that and change it. So, when does that occur? Has it occurred this year?
As you recall, you were on the continue, the comprehensive needs assessment. That was a part of the prelim to the district improvement plan. We have that finalized. It's been submitted to the state. We do that annually. Okay. Every year, we have to do a district improvement plan, and we have to revise it accordingly.
Yeah, that was a very fun activity. I, I enjoyed participating. But when will we as a board get a copy of those changes and the updated school improvement plan?
We'll have those to you. I think we are, we're finished with those. Dr. Smith has to do this as a part of the title programming.
And all grants.
And so, we have to have that, and he's finalized that, I believe.
Sure.
So, we've submitted to the state. They sent back for a few revisions to it. So, we're in the process of making those revisions, and we will resubmit. And then, once we have a backup finalized, approved improvement plan, we'll provide a, we'll provide that to you. So, it should be within the next month.
October? Okay. Sounds good. October, November?
Depends on how fast they return it to us.
Sure, of course.
It should be before November.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
On this newsletter. Okay, we're moving on to our app, our new app. Where am I? But I don't have to say anything. We're here.
All right. Well, thank you. Good evening. I am Michael Barden with the Division of Information Services team. And thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you today about how we are using the GoGuardian app. I'd like to start by expressing, if we can get the input changed. Mr. Jacobson? Thank you. I would like to start by expressing our gratitude to our fantastic community for their support of the MCSD SLOSS initiatives. Thanks to SLOSS and our committed team of professionals, MCSD is at the forefront of integrating technology to improve instruction and personalized learning across the district. We are proud to achieve a one-to-one ratio with more than 31,000 Chromebooks actively used by students on a daily basis. To enhance academic focus and ensure a safer online environment, MCSD employs GoGuardian. Now, what is GoGuardian? GoGuardian serves as a web-based application with multiple functions, including content filtering, teacher and parent Chromebook monitoring and controls, and facilitating better communications between teachers and parents. This application has been smoothly integrated into our Chromebook management approach, playing a vital role in boosting online safety for students. And GoGuardian enhances teacher effectiveness and student learning while also providing parents with a better understanding of their children's online viewing and searching habits, along with controls outside of the school hours. In summary, GoGuardian acts as a supplementary tool to ensure that our students are making responsible decisions in the digital realm. For today's purposes, we're going to be focused on two distinct features. We're going to talk a little bit about GoGuardian Teacher, and then we're going to get more in-depth about GoGuardian Parent App. What is GoGuardian Teacher? Well, GoGuardian Teacher empowers educators to establish intelligent and efficient digital learning settings that can be tailored to daily requirements or unique needs of individual students, offering instant insights into student activities and the capacity to oversee, track, and regulate digital tools on a class or individual basis. GoGuardian Teacher facilitates the creation of real-time views into student work and the ability to manage, monitor, control, and control digital resources by class or individual. It allows us to employ a one-to-one technology with confidence, and it helps ensure students have protective boundaries for their digital learning experiences. So, what does all that mean? So, I'm a classroom teacher. I have GoGuardians. Soon as I walk in, it's all set up. Teacher can say, for first period, today, we're going to be learning about this standard. And for, to make sure we enhance this standard and get the most, and our students are engaged, we're only going to go to these five websites today. So, with, using GoGuardian, they can restrict their search abilities to, to the students to those five websites. So, the students don't get off task, and they can follow what needs to be followed through Canvas or through other means of instruction. And it also gives the teachers reports. If they didn't set boundaries, it gives them reports of what the students are searching for, looking at, and things of that nature. And they could put controls. So, if you're teaching a subject matter, and they're off task, and you see it on your computer, because it pulls up each individual, what the students are looking at, and Johnny's playing a little game, they can shut that off right there. So, GoGuardian helps with that. So, with, can you hear me? All right. Now, we have the GoGuardian Parent App. Starting this school year, MCSD parents can download and access the GoGuardian Parent Mobile App. This app is designed to help keep parents aware of their children's activities on MCSD-issued Chromebooks and provide them with additional controls during out-of-school hours. GoGuardian Parent is a companion to the GoGuardian Teacher and internet filtering tools that help, that MCSD uses for district-issued Chromebooks. Through the use of this app, we hope to encourage more open and honest conversations between parents and students that will result in safer practices and responsible browsing habits. Now, it is impossible for any web filter to be 100% accurate when categorizing content on the internet. Therefore, MCSD encourages all parents to regularly monitor their children's use of the internet while at home, whether the student is using a system-owned Chromebook or a personal device. GoGuardian was created to help provide additional educational support to administrators and teachers by allowing parents to see what sites their students are browsing and providing parents with additional internet controls at home. It gives parents a bird's-eye view of the apps and websites that their kids are on most often, and control over MCSD-issued Chromebooks during out-of-school hours. With this perspective, parents can be made aware of what types of browsing behavior schools are seeing from students, so they can all work together to encourage more effective internet browsing habits at home and at school. Here's a quick overview of the Parent GoGuardian App.
And welcome to an overview of the GoGuardian Parent App. With GoGuardian Suite's Parent App, school administrators can now give parents direct access to student online activity reports and filtering controls for school devices. The simple app is managed by administrators, so they can choose what activity parents will see and what controls they have access to. But the app is downloaded and used by parents on their own. By giving parents direct access with this app, parents won't have to make requests for individual reports, and schools can reduce manual work for their IT staff. Using the app, parents can stay more informed about their child's online activity on school-issued devices. They can review top five reports and access a more detailed browsing history. If the school also uses GoGuardian Teacher, parents can see how often teachers have issued intervention commands. And now, with new filtering controls, parents can better manage their students' internet access at home. They can block specific websites on school-issued devices during out-of-school hours and pause the internet, either on demand or at a scheduled time. For more information about the GoGuardian Parent App, visit goguardian.com or talk to a GoGuardian representative today.
All right. So, that's just a brief overview of the GoGuardian Parent App. So, let's talk about what the GoGuardian Parent App can do. By providing insight and controls over student browsing activity, our goal is to empower parents to take more active roles in their children's online learning. We believe that transparency and insight will increase the likelihood, likelihood of improved student browsing habit. Included in the app, like the video you just shared, is the top five summary of student browsing. It talks about their apps, extensions, documents, and websites visited. It can show the teacher interventions that help students, help guide students' browsing behavior, such as closing tabs, blocking browsing capabilities, and/or blocking access to the website. So, if the teacher had to conduct an intervention for the student, the parent will be able to say, hey, why did Ms. Smith have to get you knocked off this website? Why wouldn't you stay in focus on, during class? A 30-day view of websites, videos, and documents and apps, their extensions are also part of the app. And here's a, a big one, website filtering to block content during out-of-school hours. We are going to set that at, currently at 4:00 PM to 7:00 AM, Monday through Friday, including all hours on the weekends and school district holidays. On-demand internet pausing that allows parents to pause on internet during out-of-school hours, and scheduled internet pausing that allows parents to predetermine periods of time the internet should be used by the student. So, parents have control at home from between 4:00 and 7:00 AM. They have control of when and how and what the student can view on the Chromebook. What is not included, the monitoring of devices, of non-district devices, excuse me. So, GoGuardian will not control the student's personal phone or, or notebook or anything of that nature. The ability to unblock sites restricted by the school district filter. So, if we've already blocked a site, they cannot unblock that site. So, that's a couple of things that it cannot do. Downloading the Parent App is easy. You can just simply iPhone, visit the App Store, download it. Android, visit the Google Play Store and download it. You would log in using the same email address that is associated with your Parent Portal app, and then follow the steps and making sure that you can log in successfully onto the Parent Portal app. Our next steps, we've done a pilot. It was very successful. We did that last spring, and we got a lot of positive feedback on that. So, our next steps, now that we're presenting this to you as the board, we would like to start our communications campaign to parents with mass notification phone messages, mass notification emails, and then maybe putting a, the parent information flyer on our website, and working with schools to make sure they put the information on their websites as well. So, more parents that could download the app, more parents have access, better transparency they have, and they can make sure they're keeping tabs on their kids' viewing habits. So, are there any questions about the GoGuardian, GoGuardian Parent App? Just another great tool that we have in place to partner with the Division of Teaching and Learning to help students be more successful.
Yeah, I think that's great. We'll probably present an opportunity for parents to update their information with the schools with their correct emails and phone numbers or new emails and phone numbers, so that they'll be able to log in if they have to use the email that was set up, that the, that the district has, that's set up with that Parent Portal. So...
Yes, ma'am.
That'd be another opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds like a great program. I just have a question. So, this is a free app?
Yes, ma'am. It's free.
Okay, totally free. Okay, very good. Sounds great to me.
It's part of our Chromebook management strategy.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you.
And finally, our last item is, Mr. Seifert is going to tell us about the summer school learning experience.
All right.
With the assistance, maybe, of Mr. Knox.
Okay. Good evening again. Keith Seifert, Chief Academic Officer. I'm here with Patrick Knopf, who's right here, Director of Research Accountability Assessment. What we want to do is just give you a brief review of our summer learning experience 2023, and excited about that because we had the largest number of students we've had. And just want to give you that information to help you gain a better understanding of what, what happened over the summer. That's kind of the order of the presentation. We'll talk about the, what we offered in the enrollment piece, community partners. Then Patrick's going to talk... Uh, then Patrick's going to talk about the, um, um, the STAR assessment data, uh, and the survey that we provided to the students, the parents, and the, uh, educators. Uh, and then the timeline for next year's. Here's the program. Uh, it, it didn't change. You've, you've seen this information, uh, in previous presentations. Um, you can look at the pre-K program. Uh, that was a longer program, 22 days, uh, seven hours per day. We started on May 30th and went through, uh, July 6th. Uh, they did increase the number of students. It was 12 the previous year and then went to 14 this year, but we added two more classes this year, um, that the state provided us. Uh, you see the eligibility there, uh, and, um, uh, had a great program. Uh, kids, uh, they were, all classes were full, um, so, uh, we were excited about that. K-8 program, uh, we had 16 days, uh, six hours per day, June 5th through the 29th. Uh, similar 18 students per class as we did, uh, the previous year. Uh, and we utilized, uh, Scholastic, uh, uh, ELA Lit Camp, uh, program as well as the Math Camp, um, and then provided some enrichment activities. We also provided the opportunity for our third, fifth, and eighth graders, uh, this year to take the retest for the Georgia Milestones, uh, in reading and math. Not catching me? All right, sorry about that. So we did provide that opportunity, uh, and, uh, provided the necessary resources for special education, uh, students, um, and their accommodations as well as, um, uh, testing coordinators and so forth. Our high school program, again, 16, uh, mimics the K-8, the program, uh, and the focus on credit recovery, uh, SAT and ACT prep and, uh, also, uh, AP and IB opportunities and those enrichment activities. Here's the enrollment. There's a comparison with 2022. Uh, as you can see, uh, we had 6,329 students, uh, and, uh, that's about, uh, about 635 more than we had the previous year. Uh, it shows the number of staff members, uh, that we had. There's our, um, information with regards to community partners and the comparison. Uh, kudos to our transportation department as always. They stepped up and, 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 and really provided the necessary support for our kids. And that says, uh, students were continuously enrolling, uh, and, and providing stops for them. Uh, they did a fantastic job. Uh, with, uh, the number of, uh, students transported, we increased that number as well as the number of stops. Uh, and our, uh, school nutrition, nutrition program, uh, look at the number of breakfasts served and lunches served. Uh, so, uh, dramatically increased those numbers as well. Uh, we, uh, reduced the number of sites for efficiency. Uh, you can see that from 34 to 29. You'll see later on as part of our action review that we'll have to reduce that even more to help support efficiency. Uh, there's the budget comparison. Uh, you can see we spent, uh, approximately, uh, about 1.2 million more this year, uh, than we did the previous year. It, and, and, uh, that is a correction. Uh, I think we flip-flopped the, the charts, uh, and the dates were flip-flop. My apologies. We have the.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure which one was right. Okay, thank you.
I apologize for that.
No, you're, you're perfect, thank you.
I noticed that this afternoon and I said, "Oh, we transposed the, the charts." We try to read from left to right here. And, and I have you reading from right to left. So, uh, like I said, about 1.2 million than we spent the previous year. These are all the, uh, community partners. Again, thank you so much to our community partners for what they do to help support , uh, summer learning. Um, and a big thank you to Matt Bell. Uh, he's the one that, uh, took that on and coordinated, uh, and scheduled all these for the schools so the schools didn't have to schedule it themselves. Um, and you could, you'll see that we, we ran a, uh, we pre-scheduled all the sessions so everybody had equal access. Um, United Way as always is a great supporter of, of, uh, us. Uh, we had 24 partners. You can see the number of sessions and the number of hours provided, uh, uh, for those sessions. Um, and, uh, Matt calculated, we had 66 community partner members, um, that, uh, served as, uh, teachers, facilitators, and volunteers. Here's our high school data, uh, and, uh, what's good about this is that we reduced the number of kids going to summer learning, um, uh, simply because, uh, there were less kids needing, uh, credit recovery. Uh, so you can see the enrollment and the credit recovery there. We had, uh, less, uh, summer graduates, um, and, but we had more participation in AP and IB and SAT and, uh, ACT prep. So that's, uh, we want to flip those numbers. So we have more working on those, uh, areas instead of credit recovery. Do a lot of that credit recovery during the year, uh, to help support through Georgia Virtual and also our Apex Program. All right, I'm going to bring, uh, Patrick up. I think these numbers, uh, that he's going to share with you, uh, help support, uh, uh, summer learning and the summer slide that we, uh, generally see. So Patrick?
Good evening. So as Keith said, um, I'm here to address the STAR data. I want to point something out and in the past, what we noticed, especially with students who did not attend, um, summer learning, we noticed that both groups saw a drop in overall, uh, Lexile scores, which is, um, not necessarily what we found this year. And, and one of the things that, a couple of things, um, that we looked into to kind of figure out what's going on here. One of them is that the scaling for STAR changed this year. So those students that are reading at a lower level, the scaling for that actually changed some and they've got it so that STAR early literacy and then STAR reading are both on the same scale, but we actually see a bit of a dip once students move to that higher level for reading. We actually see a bit of a dip there. The other thing that we also noticed when looking at these groups of students is that, um, there was a big push this year because of the retests to get as many of those students that we knew were struggling readers in, um, to test, particularly with third grade. So, um, there was a big push there as well. So that's another thing that, that's at play. And I think, um, when we looked at the individual school level, particularly those students or the schools that were identified, um, as CSI schools by the state, the state-identified schools, um, there was definitely a huge difference between the kids who attended summer learning and the ones that didn't. Um, in fact, like for instance, off the top of my head, Baker is one where we saw, um, an increase for kids who did summer learning, whereas students that didn't actually saw the summer slide. Um, we saw something similar at Davis, Diamond, some of those other schools where we look at the individual school level for schools that we know have been identified, um, and they had large numbers of students that attended. Those students actually fared considerably better than their peers who didn't attend. Um, so at the individual level or the school level, we definitely saw some improvement. Um, at the aggregate level, like I said, there are a few things going on here with it, um, with the reading. As we look at the math, and again, this is very similar to what we saw last year with math, which is there's definitely a benefit for students that attend summer learning. Um, and, you know, based on the recent presentation with the Georgia Post students' course for math, we know that math dropped across the states, dropped across the nation. Uh, so anything we can do to, to, um, lessen or prevent a slide is good. And so clearly there was evidence there with math. And next we have the feedback. So, um, just generally, we, we did kind of a different survey for the students and you'll see it was, is a much simpler survey, but overall, generally speaking, the, the, you can see with the pie chart there that the students were overall overwhelmingly in favor and enjoyed summer learning. When we dig into what about summer learning did you like? Well, overwhelmingly, they liked PE and sports. So, um, and when we get to the student feedback, you'll see some of the comments that they made, um, which are kind of funny if you, if you read them. If you look at what they liked least, you ended up with, um, ELA and math. So the academic, it's not much of a surprise that the academics were what they liked least. But looking at parents, so we asked parents and educators basically the same questions, which were, did you feel that the academic elements were sufficient? Um, did you think the social-emotional supports were sufficient? And did you find that the, uh, community partners were enriching or a good experience for students? And again, you can see there overwhelmingly, um, parents thought that all of it was very beneficial. And same thing with admin and teachers. We, we surveyed all the employees that participated and again, same thing. Did you think the academic elements were, um, were good? Did you think the social-emotional were good? And did you think the community partners enhanced? And again, overwhelmingly positive, um, from our educators and, and admin that we surveyed. Digging into the comments, so we make comments as a part of it. Um, this is a very, 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 um, short list of things, but really what I was looking for more were recurring themes. And so with the kids, you can see, eh, eh, in line with their enjoyment of sports and those types of activities, they wanted more outside time or gym time. Um, as hot as it was, I don't know why. Um, they, another thing we saw a lot of it was a snack time after lunch, um, even though they eat lunch and they go home maybe a couple hours later. Uh, we did have a lot of comments asking for snack. And then they really wanted field trips off-site. That was another thing that they really wanted. And of course, I didn't include the things that said no math, um, or no ELA. Um, but that was in there. Parental feedback, one of the things that we got is more communication to parents about the activities during SLE and, and mostly what we were seeing were things like where they wanted to know, um, particularly with those parents who had students that were struggling learners, what were the things they were working on and what are things they need to do at home, that kind of thing. So I think that's something that we'll want to incorporate there as parents are saying to us, "Hey, tell me what's going on." In fact, I remember one of the comments, "If you have any kids that are school age, you can relate to this," because one of them was, "I asked them and they, what they did today and they said nothing." Um, so, um, if you have any kids, you know that's probably what you usually hear. The other thing is they were asking for more STEAM opportunities and type, activities and things like that. Our educators asked for lower student-teacher ratios, um, which, Keith, those are at what now? One to? Yeah, one to 18 as it is, um, but they're asking for lower. Uh, more time for social-emotional learning, that was another thing that we, that we heard a lot of. And then, um, they were talking about considering parallel programs for acceleration remediation, meaning, um, not necessarily having all those kids that need remediation with all the same kids where, um, looking at maybe where, and it's something we've talked about internally, looking at maybe where, um, they all participate in the community partners and the SEL, but we might have some more differentiation more for what they actually work on when they're there. So those kind of generally speaking, like I said, there were, there were hundreds and thousands of respondents, so it's a lot to go through, but these are kind of the recurring themes that we kept seeing come back up.
Thank you, Patrick.
So there were acceleration programs.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, let me, I'll, I want to get some understanding of what that means with parallel, parallel remedial and accelerated programs.
So, so our.
They're going parallel at the same time.
Programming was using, um, Lit Camp and Math Camp as kind of the theme. So you have a camp-like ma, atmosphere. It's a scripted program. Um, what they're talking about is having more of a scripted program for students that, that may need remediation, uh, that need support with that instead of lumping them in with, uh, uh, the math and Lit Camp. Again, we were trying to, when we, when we initially started this, it was about getting them back in and engagement. How do we get them back in and engage them and make, uh, we had the summer school thought process instead of the experience. Uh, so we're, we're trying to get them to understand that, you know, hey, coming back and, and having some enrichment activities and, and, and make the, the reading and, and the literacy activities engaging as well as the math in that camp-like bath, atmosphere. So teachers are kind of thinking, let's, let's try to have a scripted program for those kids that need that support in third, fifth, and eighth grade, um, um, during that time or to help, uh, them with more specific skilled activities. Does that make sense?
Yes, very good, can, uh, very good, um, comment too. Very good. Are you, are we considering that for next time?
Yep, absolutely. As you can see, we, we've done an after-action review and, and, uh, looking at the summer learning, uh, uh, the community partners, how do we make, how do we create more alignment with those learning gaps, uh, to look at the, the skills that are, that we need that are deficient? Uh, and how do we align that, those enrichment activities towards that, uh, and making sure that they're covering those, uh, particular standards and skills? Uh, I want to say kudos to that, uh, our SLE app and our, uh, Division of Information Services. They created an app this year, uh, for the student registration process, uh, and we use that diligently, uh, to, um, uh, help, uh, and, and we thought it was a lot easier for parents to use, um, as well as our, our staff. So we integrated, uh, uh, the, uh, the student registration process with our staff application process. So it was all in one app. Uh, so, uh, we've, we've got some things that we have to tweak with that, but, uh, we created, uh, I think as we move forward, we'll create, uh, schedules in those apps and, and be able to, uh, assign classes, which we did this year, but create it more as a schedule, uh, in summer learning.
That was very, um, that was a great addition to cut down the confusion with parents thinking they registered for one or the other.
Right.
Or both when, when we had them separated. So that was good for them to be combined. I like that.
Absolutely. We, uh, uh, those folks, uh, Dis and Ron and his team, uh, um, really did an excellent job with that. The, uh, this, uh, we know that, uh, uh, students that are not reading on grade level or their math skills are not on, on grade level. Um, for this next year, uh, we, we need to continually push that and, uh, use that as a determination factor for promotion retention and really focus on that. Um, we felt pretty good about what we did this year, um, to help support that, uh, but again, we're starting at the beginning of this year, letting folks know, um, if you're not, uh, reading on grade level or, or you're not, uh, your math is not on grade level, you need to come to summer learning. And that will be a part of the determining process for promotion and retention, especially at third, fifth, and eighth grade. Uh, increase the number of, uh, that's an all, a continuous process to continue to increase, uh, the AP, um, and, uh, SAT and ACT prep. Uh, we, we did hear about STEAM activities. How do we do that? Um, uh, with, uh, more efficiency and effectiveness? Uh, as you're aware, we had some, they weren't connected to summer learning, uh, but, uh, the gifted program ran, uh, ran a, uh, program for their, their students. And we also had an engineering, uh, program run at downtown, uh, that was open to all students across the, uh, the district. So, uh, how do we do that at, at a more, uh, effective level? Still need to reduce, as I said, need to reduce the number of school sites, um, uh, to create efficiency. This is the last year of our ESR funding, uh, so these are some of the things we have to think about to become more efficient and, and effective with our, our resources. Uh, so how do we reduce those numbers, uh, and still address, uh, the needs of the students? And, and then always, we, we have to continue to, uh, improve our communications, uh, with the parents and community.
Also, um, an after-action, um, review would be, uh, it was great to see that the acceleration increased, but we, I would like for you to communicate with us our overage, undercredit, that number of students.
Okay.
Um, and maybe consider adding that to Sanco, Sancofa Academy over at the Success, Success Center. I did speak to the principal over there and I know they have a limited capacity, but from his opinion, um, that can be replicated in middle schools because we, we don't, uh, it's important that we, uh, provide these opportunities for all of our students. And so that overage, undercredit population, uh, we'd like to know what that, what that number is and what is our plan? How are we, um, addressing that?
Okay, all right. Here's a, um, timeline that we're looking at for this next year. Um, really no, uh, significant changes other than we're moving up, um, uh, the advertisement, uh, uh, for staff postings into January instead of February, uh, this year to get that out, uh, as well as communication to parents. Uh, and, uh, and then the student registration process will open in February. That's a little bit earlier. Uh, and, uh, and then, and also making sure we have site coordinators identified prior to January, uh, so we can go ahead and get started on the process to have them ready to be able to hire, uh, staff, um, uh, beginning in February. So we can have those staff, uh, staff solidified. Uh, another big thing is closing the, uh, student registration to parents on the 30th, um, but still having the option for our, our schools to be able to register kids. But we need to get those numbers solidified so we can, uh, we can hire staff and, and have a good number, um, for that. Uh, and then, uh, either we can start, uh, our, um, uh, summer learning, uh, in May, the last week in May, um, or, uh, again, do it in the first week in June, again, this, uh, this year. But, uh, those are things we'll have to decide and, and we'll have a presentation to you in January, uh, on where we're at and what we're going to do.
Was that not a part of your survey to ask the? Was that not a part of your survey to ask the parents about the time, the start time and end time?
We, we didn't ask that question because we have a limited amount of time during that month. We, we generally want to get finished with this prior to July because people, we have our staff that are, they've had a long year, plus they're working the summer learning, so they need to have relief as well. But you know, whether we start in May, at the end of May or in, or the first week in July, we can certainly ask that question. But again, I thank you to the, you know, certainly our, our board members and to you all for providing this opportunity for us and, and you know, the funding for it and, and supporting it because it's important and we have to stop that summer slide and increase those activities and get kids more engaged. So appreciate your time. Yes.
I have a couple of questions and I'll go back just a little bit. During the presentation, you all mentioned that there was a dip in the literacy scores as they went up. Do we know what the reason is for the dip? Is it because of the difficulty of the vocabulary? Or what happens that causes that to dip, that was scores to dip?
Yeah, when, when they're on the STAR early literacy, once they begin to actually actively read and are doing more than just.
Comprehension.
Yeah, well, yes, as we move towards reading for comprehension and things like that, the cognitive load for that's a little more diff, it's difficult. So while the scaling for the two different things are the same, what we've noticed consistently is as kids transition to the other one, it's, it's, it's actually a different set of tasks that they're asked to do. So we're, we're moving really the transition from learning to read to reading to learn is kind of what we see. And so we do see a bit of a dip there. Once they move over to that other assessment. And again, since we targeted so many of the students that we already knew were behind in reading, a lot of those students would have been on that older assessment in this fall, may have moved over to the other one as they've made progress. So we, we do see that dip happen.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead. I have a couple of questions.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about the text complexity, both in terms of vocabulary, length of sentence endurance and length of sentence structure.
Right.
Yeah, yes, I'm familiar with the test. What type, you mentioned also in your presentation that there was an increase in scores for the students who were able to attend the summer school. Is that an increase in Lexile score, increase in zone approximate development? What kind of increase?
STAR gives us a standard score Lexile and that's what we were using. So that's, that's the one that went up. And it's the one that they use as their predictor for success on Georgia Milestones. So in, in the schools that we saw, as I said, the state identified schools, I want to be clear, the state identified schools, we either saw a lesser, significantly lesser slide or in some cases we saw improvement, depending on the school. So that, but that's what I was talking about was that predictor score.
And I also mentioned too, the, the reason we're using the STAR is because it's much more closely related and correlated with the actual GMA test than some other screening tools that are out there.
Right. Do we have sort of an overview of how the district is doing district wide in literacy? Have we looked at that?
Absolutely, yes.
And if so, can you send that to us so that we know sort of like, where are those target areas? Or those areas where we really need to target literacy, where we are seeing sort of a dip for the kids?
We've just completed, well, we just, we, we did our STAR assessment in August. We kind of rescheduled that so it's not a large window, but more like you need to do it on this day and you have a couple of days to make it up. So we get a reliable and valid score. So we have that data. Schools are, are now using that data. We will then compile it. The goal is to have Renaissance come in and have district teams or school teams to talk about the data and look at their, their specific school and then identify skills that are deficient and really address those particular skills.
Okay, with the summer, with the summer school in particular, is there a pre and post test so that you see the growth that the children are making over the summer?
What we've, what we've done is use the, the spring assessment that they've taken at the end of the year. Then we give them another STAR assessment at the end of summer learning. And then they, and then the, the August assessment, and then they compile those numbers and we get the score, the difference in the score.
And the teacher sort of gets that diagnostic report on each child?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, I didn't know if I was, I think Vanessa was.
I, I have a question. Well, I have a coming in a question. We get a lot of information on how the schools are doing as a district. My concern is, and I would like to know how the individual schools are doing. So my question is, I don't know who will be able to answer it, is do we have like any schools on the like underperforming? And?
Yes, ma'am. We presented that last year and we'll have to do, and we're, and that's scheduled to come up next month.
So, okay.
For the, the schools that are identified, we have to do that from a state perspective to give you an update on where our schools are that are considered CSI, TSI schools.
Okay, so that's what it's called.
That will be coming next month and the resources and supports, we're providing them from the district level as well as the state level.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Mr. Lough, the information you presented, I'm trying to get a good, see how we analyze the, the summer school, the improvement for summer school students. So what did we use? We used from spring to the end of summer school and then in August. Did we, did we use all of those?
Yes.
We use, okay, so your presentation.
But the, but the students that did not attend won't have a summer score.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just strictly talking about summer school students. The, the, uh, students who attended the summer school experience. For those students, we have scores from spring assessment. We have scores from the end of the summer assessment. And then we have the scores that they should have had where all of the kids in the district, fall assessment. So were those school, scores analyzed from spring to after summer school to fall?
What, what was, we used the summer to help us group the students. What we, what was presented tonight was spring to fall. And so the students that were in the yes group, we didn't use the summer score, we used the fall score because we wanted a comparison of apples to apples.
Okay. More apples to apples if you had, you use the spring to after summer school, it seems to me.
Well, because we're comparing both groups. So if we compare the group of students.
Just for summer, just the summer group, not, not, I know you're doing a, you probably like to do it because you have the maths, the, all everybody in this.
Yeah, there's like 16,000 cases.
It's just easier, you know.
Well, it's the only way we have to know who, who did it and who didn't. And then the other thing that we do is if they don't have, if they don't meet all the criteria, for instance, they don't have all the scores, they don't get included. That's why you'll see a difference in the, in the numbers.
But we do have the names of people who went to summer school.
We do, but again, for various reasons, they may not have taken the assessment in the summer. They may not have completed summer learning. They may not have had a spring score. Anywhere where they don't meet all the criteria, we have to take them out because we want to be able to make sure that we have as close to accurate a group as we can. Plus I have no way to go through and find them. I mean, by name, we would have to.
That's actually the case for spring and the summer too, and spring and the fall.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'm saying, yes.
All of it is the same case. I, I'm, my point is that it just seems to me you can get a better analysis of what's going on if you did all three scores for the summer school experienced people, even if, I know it's harder. I know it's, it's harder to like to extract that group, that summer group at the end of the summer and then compare the spring scores to the, to the end of summer and then to the fall. Because now actually, those STAR schools, they just change, you know, I can give a STAR, I can give my student a STAR test at one o'clock on Monday and two hours later, it would, could be totally different.
So.
So I'm just saying, so you still, if, if you do it more in frequency, you will have a better idea. You have three and you have a frequency and you'll have a better idea of what you're actually dealing with. That's why.
So we do have those and we can do that. It's not, it's not hard. What we're, what we're doing though, for the theory of action for summer learning, at least in terms of what we're presenting to you here was, the theory of action was it would reduce the summer slide. So the aim was to show them in comparison to their peers that didn't attend. But we absolutely can do a spring to summer. And I know what you're talking about with STAR, this is a different STAR. It's a different STAR test than the one that, I, I'm very familiar with the one you're talking about where you could give it in the next day, they may look like, yeah.
Okay, so there is a new STAR test?
Yes, ma'am. This is, this is a different, this is a different STAR screener altogether. This is not like the diagnostic that you gave on the individual basis in the classroom, which I'm very familiar with that one as well. But I mean, we could certainly run a comparison of spring to summer. The aim, like I said, was to, was basically to provide the data to answer our question for our theory of action. But we could certainly look at a spring to summer.
And what I, and the reason I said that is just for you, oh, you're doing more like Pat than she is. Okay, the reason I said that, to me, it just seems like you get a better analysis of what's going on academically. I mean, just a better, because you'll have, you'll have a more frequency. One, two, three, have three as opposed to two times. And sometimes you can like get a better assessment of what's actually going on with the three.
Okay.
And, and, and it's just a suggestion, you don't even have to bring that.
No, we, I can get it and send it to you though, because I mean, we, yeah, we can run it easy.
Okay. So is that, does that mean it would be indicated somewhere that in that fall assessment that Ms. Buckner is talking about, is it indicated somewhere in Infinite Campus or who participated?
That's how we, we look at the STAR summer and use that as our way to group those kids out.
Okay.
Because they're not flagged anywhere in Infinite Campus. So that, that allows us, one, gives some feedback for the teachers that had them there then, but it also allows us to then look at that subset of students as compared to the population as a whole. So when we run that fall, you know, it's not everybody, it's summer learning students compared to non summer learning students based on who had a score, which also tells us who completed summer learning. Because again, some kids start to attend and then don't finish, come late. There's lots of different circumstances. And so when there's morbidity in the data where we're losing cases, we just take them out. So we have a clean, you met all the criteria. It's, we're comparing apples to apples.
Gotcha. Okay, anything else? Any, are there any more questions?
Trying to figure out how efficient that is. I think about it.
Ma'am?
Nothing. Thank you. Any more questions, anybody? Okay, that concludes the education committee. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Alright, Ms. Slod, discipline committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no items submitted for the discipline committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Chilary, policy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is item 6.01 and it is the, the recommendation is approve revised board policies GAMA and GRCA-1 to be carried over to the October meeting as dictated by the Muskogee County School District Policy, BDC. Pretty much what we're doing with these two policies, if I understand it correctly, is adding the, the drivers of the activity buses so that we can drug screen them because they are not required. They don't have a CDL necessarily. So it's just an amendment so that we can drug test people who are driving other vehicles with students on them. Do I have any questions? If not, I will move on to 6.0. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is, we have the two policies attached, but is it redlined?
I didn't see it.
The changes? Are there two separate ones?
Underlined, okay. Alright, sounds good. Thank you. And now, 6.02. The 2023 legislative priorities were approved by the Board of Education on November 28th, 2022. The Board of Education met with the local legislative delegate, delegation on Wednesday, January 25th, 2023 and discussed the legislative priorities. And attached you will find the Muskogee County School Board proposed 2023 legislative priorities. We have 11, 11 of them and do y'all want me to read all of them? I didn't think so, I was just making sure. Okay, are there any questions?
This is, yeah, this is an opportunity if you want to add something. I, I do know that what has been a discussion among the board is to, from my perspective, priority number one would be to revisit and see what else we need to do that will address vacancies on our Board of Education and how we can handle that locally versus the cost of a special election. Ms. Board has been out of her office and she's going to send the cost for the, we've only had two special elections for, to fill vacancies. And then within 18 months or 12 months, you know, the election, the general election would occur again just to see, you know, how we can make that a local option that we would have to fill the vacancies when it's on the short term like that. If you have anything else, just send an email if you want something to be considered.
Gistical question. So these are the proposed 2023 legislative priorities that they're going to take back in 2024?
Those, those are the priorities from last year and they're on the agenda so that you can review them and have some input if you want to add anything or change anything. Those are our previous, last year's and the year before that.
But they won't take these up until, because they're finished recession, right?
They're getting ready to go back in January. And so that's why we're talking about it now so that when we have our legislative breakfast or luncheon, whichever you want to do this year, we can present them as we do annually. And so this is our, right now, we're trying to get ready for that. And so we want, well, no, the goal is to have it now like October and not wait for December because it's too much. Yeah, it's.
Make the adjustments now. Those dates really soon?
To present in January. That's what we're doing, yeah.
No, we're not going to present it to our legislature in January.
It's going to be at the legislative breakfast.
Prior to them going. Okay, so what, what do we say? Yes, okay, I was trying to answer her. Typically, we do a breakfast and we would have it sometime in December is what we have been doing traditionally. We're going to move that up to the fall.
Perfect.
And so it's on the agenda now, asking for you to give your input on items to be added or updated on the legislate, previous legislative agenda that we had. So looking for that for you. Next month. It's not a policy, we just put it under that category so that we can have it on the agenda. And we could, we could, actually if you, if you had some, if you had some thoughts this week, you know, we can move at, at your will. But we do want to get started on that now. That's why it's on the agenda now.
If I may suggest today is the 11th, if, if you could have any changes to us by two weeks from today on the 25th. That way Ms. Jones and I can work on formatting and get them ready for you for the October meeting and move that forward. Okay?
Ms. Chilary, anything else?
If I don't have any more questions, then that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll look at the 25th.
Thank you so very much. Ms. Jackson, personnel?
7.01 is the personnel report and there is four attachments. Are there any questions about any of these attachments?
It's personnel. Get your mic for me.
One question for information. I, I noticed that the vacancies were done, I think in the month of August and I looked down. I, it was interesting.
Uh, I, it was interesting to me, um, in the H R department with, um, Mrs., uh, what's her name? It was like seventeen. No, not Ms. Gardner. It was, uh, with, um, she was over there. Ms. Reed.
Oh, Ms. Reed, oh, okay.
Yeah, Ms. Reed, yeah, she had, it was like seventeen, I think, or, uh, ele, eleven, it was either eleven or seventeen. It was just more than everybody else. And I was wondering, how's the department going with so many vacancies? Wha, wha, what kind of jobs were they? It was so many of them. And I was just wondering, is the department going okay or why, uh, what kind of jobs was?
Ms. Reed supports, uh, Student Services.
She what now?
Supports Student Services. So what, the the table that you see is representative of the numbers associated with the personnel that they're supporting, that they're tracking. So when you see Ms. Reed's name and she's looking at, it's not H R, she's, she's, she has Student Services.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, that's technical, that's a technical point. But to my point, there were seventeen vacancies. Why is?
It's, yeah, I have.
So wherever that is, wha, wherever that is and whatever department and whatever section, is it operating okay? There were seventeen of them, I think it was seventeen of.
It's painful.
Huh?
It's qu, it's quite painful. When last, uh, previous years, we were down thirteen and trying to operate and make it transparent to everyone else. And, uh, Dr. Fickerford is is doing a phenomenal job, uh, but it is very painful to be that shorthanded, yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to see, because I saw that.
Well, Ms. Buckner, if you look at the division of operations and facility, it was two hundred and seventy-two. If you, if you blush and over seventeen.
I was going. I wasn't going to hold, I was going per month. And that was in the month of August.
This is the month of August.
Okay, is that two hundred and eighty-two per month? Uh, is that, is that one area? So they?
It's one area.
Okay, and what area was that?
Division of Operations, which is Plant Services, Buses.
Dr. Anderson. Dr. Anderson. But they also have those separated, like, I mean.
Yes, I'm looking at, uh-huh.
But they separated. This, this is one area, it's not, um.
It's one area. If you click on that, um, if you click on that, um, attachment.
No, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, she has it, they have it broken out. Evidently, we requested it.
Yeah.
Because it's a chart, okay.
I was looking at, I thought it was, you know, I was looking at, I thought it was very nice the way they had.
Are you looking speci, if you're looking specifically at Student Services with Brenda Reed, she is the, she is the one who's representing, um, tracking the information for Student Services. So when you go over on the graph and you see the Division of Student Services and where they meet up with Brenda Reed, there are currently twenty-one vacancies for Student Services, uh, that she's tracking and trying to, um, assist with filling the vacancies. Is that helpful?
All right.
I think the Division of Operations and Facilities.
The, I think the total number is off. You just might.
The two seventy-two?
No, the one twenty-two that says total at the end.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Because I was like, the total number is off, uh, yeah.
Oh, okay, I got you, going across. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Yes, it should be.
Yeah.
One twenty, uh, that that one twenty-two is wrong, yes.
Yes.
Fix that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other attachments you want to review or?
No, 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 I just noticed that that was. Yeah, that's kind of what everybody's, that's what everybody.
Are there any more questions? Hearing none.
Ms. Frey? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. Our n, next committee is property with Ms. Pat Frey.
All right, uh, this is eight point oh one. This is the library report. Uh, just a reminder that Help Now, uh, the virtual, uh, learning for, uh, after school or or homework help is available. Over a thousand children were in the preschool daycare centers this summer. Reminder, you can get the Georgia State Part Pass through the libraries. And nice little story about a young man who was looking for books, uh, to study for his citizenship and his staff was very helpful. Nice little update on the library. Is that better? I've never been called quiet before. Any questions on the library report? Eight point oh two, the museum report. Again, activities, program attendance of two hundred and sixteen and various, uh, activities through the month of August. The River Center, uh, the Kevin Cole presentation, the, uh, Carver High School A P art and the work with the Department of Juvenile Justice. Any questions, comments on those? Moving on to eight point oh three, the Tillinghurst property. And I'll read this directly. The property located at five fourteen Morris Road, Columbus, Georgia, three one nine oh one, was historically used for school purposes by the Muskogee County School District. However, it is no longer used as such. The prop, property has a revisionary clause which states, once it is no longer being used for school purposes, it revert back to the Morris family. Okay, the Muskogee County School District will work through the legal process to return the piece of property back to the Morris family per the revisionary clause. Any questions on that?
Um, not a question, but just a comment.
There's no attachment for that? Can we just get a copy of that revisionary clause sent out?
Thank you, yes, we're waiting for the heirs to finalize their paperwork and we'll have it for you.
Anything else? Moving on to eight point oh four, surplus property. This is the property furniture. Um, first, new students, uh, student desks and teacher desks were replaced. New furniture, require the disposal of old furniture requesting, uh, the purchasing department's requesting permission to dispose of through auction, bid process, or cooperative con, contract. Any questions, concerns? And there's a list of the surplus property attached if anybody, hmm, maybe not. All right, moving on to some surplus property electronics. Again, May twenty, May seventeen, twenty twenty-one, the board approved a contract award for end-user devices consisting of Chromebook computers and tablets, laptop computers, desktop computers, and associated technologies through R F P twenty-one dash zero one four. The process of refreshing employee and student devices throughout the school district has yielded a large number of technology devices being received by the Muskogee County warehouse that are in need of disposal. Again, looking to dispose of these through the declaration of surplus sale, uh, through bids, through contracts. And there is a complete list of 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 those as well. Any questions on that? Yes.
Chair, do we sell a lot of this, Madam Chair? Do we sell a lot of the stuff on this bid here? Do we get a lot of reaction from it?
Someone's coming to speak that.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, good evening. Edwin Joseph, Senior Director of Purchasing and Supply Management. Yes, we do get roughly pennies on the dollar. The last time that we did the bid, we received close to eighty-eight thousand dollars on surplus. Um, and the time before that, when we were at around fifty-eight thousand dollars, um, when we actually sell out the surplus items.
Who do, who normally buys this stuff when you're on the surplus, other schools, is that where?
No, no, um, these items have to go to an I T reseller. So what happens with the I T reseller, they will actually take the hard drives, wipe out the hard drives. If the items like the metals, the precious metals, the rubber, the plastic, any of the items that can be recycled, they actually pay us back on those. So everything gets broken down and we actually make a little bit of a profit from it.
Good, thank you, sir.
Very welcome.
Yes, sir.
Moving to eight point oh six, surplus property automotive. Again, some automotive shop items from the Carver High School shop. Again, requesting permission to go take those through bid, through auction. Um, there's about five items, um, to be auctioned off or sold. Any questions on that? Seeing none, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you so very much, um, Ms. Frey, Mr. Cantrell, construction.
Madam Chair, as we move on to item nine point oh one, the state capital outlay application. The application for F Y twenty-five state entitlement funds has been submitted for one project. The total estimated cost of the project will be two million sixty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. It is anticipated that four hundred and eighty thousand seventy-eight dollars will be in a state funding and the remaining one point, one million five hundred and eighty-three thousand to complete the project with a local funding. The project is listed in the detailed application down below. Any questions on that? Is this for air conditioning? I'm I'm seeing for the Georgetown Elementary Facility. This is for, okay, thank you, sir. Moving to my next one, nine point oh two, secure vestibule architect. On January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, the board approved two W Rs, the architectural firm that would evaluate school entrances for potential upgrades that would increase the security level of the front entrances by creating a secure vestibule. The architectural firm worked with the Muskogee County School District Construction, Plant Service, and School Administration to vet, to evaluate buildings that had not already been addressed and past renovations. The process led to the architect firm providing an initial evaluation, simple sketches and suggested scope. The construction department is is requesting that two W R architects create construction documents and bid the secure visibles out following the standard state procedure process. The fee for this service will be seven point five percent of the construction budget. Any questions, ladies? Moving next to nine point oh three Brewer Elementary H V A C design. The H V A C equipment at Brewer Elementary School needs to be replaced. As the equipment has outlived its lifespan, the typical lifespan of an H V A C equipment is ten to twenty years. And most of the equipment at Brewer is over thirty-one years. The construction department is requesting the board to approve Peach Engineering to design the H V A C equipment replacing Brewer Elementary School. Any more, any questions on on Brewer? If not, we go to nine point oh four Brewer Elementary H V manager at risk. I jumped off the page. Okay, we just did that. This ain't just one I just talked about, is it? Okay, okay. I just wanted to look at, uh, the approve, approve the construction manager at risk delivery method for installing the H V A C equipment at Brewer Elementary School. And go to the next nine point oh five, construction status report. Travis, did you have anything today at Ward? Turn it over to Ward.
Outstanding. Ward O M C and Director of Plant Service and Construction. Uh, we're gonna go over the September slideshow, um, construction slide, slideshow. Uh, here we have the Mary A. Buckner Academy. This is the rendering, uh, continuing with the front entrance here. On this right here, this is an updated picture from a couple of days ago. Where we at, we have the water barrier sprayed on so you can see, uh, where the front entrance is in current design or current construction. We have the back of the building, so this is opposite of the front there, where you can see the back, the three layers. They're going up and and really behind us, they're getting ready to start the foundation for the gym and the cafeteria. So that's kind of a three sixty surrounding of the building. Here, we just have a small video going from, uh, left to right.
Is that the front or the back?
This is the front. This is the front.
That's the front, and I noticed that it's sloping down toward the building. So, so that we don't continue to repeat ourselves, are we going to go ahead and install the drainage system?
We have got a robust drainage system in the front that's cool to keep water from going into the building and into parking lots.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Uh, here we have the Arnold Modernization Project. Um, the the back shot here is the gym. You know, we showed it completely demolished two months ago. And now we have the footers in and starting up with the C M U or the center block walls that are going up.
Is school open now at Arnold?
It is. We are doing that in a phased approach. They have students moving around. Um, right now, we've got the football field or the athletic field, um, the the administration area, um, and going on. And we have, uh, students moving around and will continue to move them around.
Okay.
Uh, here we have the admin area that's, um, inside of Arnold. As y'all can see, we've got the new furniture, a beautiful, I mean, the whole finish is completely there. It looks really great. The 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 principals and the administration are extremely happy over there. Uh, we got the Columbus, uh, High exterior upgrade, interior exterior upgrades. You got the front steps here, looking up to the school. You got a, a clear view of the building.
Beautiful.
Uh, the fencing around, keeping students out from outside, the outside world, uh, looks good there.
Discussing that it looks the same, we were just trying to keep it close to the original design.
That is, that is correct. Matching with the architect, the existing building.
But they were completely torn down. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I was gonna say.
What is this to the left side?
To the left side, this is the front drive of of the school.
Okay, we, did y'all just build those?
Uh, the planters were already there. Uh, they had, uh, outdated, you know, huge trees in there. And of course, the fencing and the pillars.
Security fencing, okay. But one of the things I really appreciate, um, you may recall at Jordan a few years back, we did a soft wash that building and made it look so much better. We did the same thing at Columbus High and it looks really nice, very. Beautiful. And you can actually see the school now, which is kind of novel. Are those all new lights?
They are, the whole, the whole structure is new lights, uh, stairs, the brick, the the plants around it, the the whole structure. The flagpole at the the front, uh, the existing base was there and and refinished, repatter coated because it'd been donated years ago. So the base of the flagpole, uh, has just been refinished. Everything else in that picture is new.
Beautiful, Ward. It really is.
So this is just a picture continuing on with the H fact project, um, slated to be done towards the winter twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we're waiting for some larger breaks and we are working on a couple of classrooms at a time over there. The m, School of Men's working with us well on that. Same at Hardaway, exact same, so that's some of their equipment outside. Uh, this is the middle school fields upgrade phase two project. Uh, this two pictures are of Eddie. Uh, we have the sawwalks being installed. Uh, looking across the field there, you see the irrigation is being installed as well. So that sawwalk wraps around and since your left picture, you have the field or where it'll be final grading and some grass will be there in a few weeks. Uh, here we have the Richards Field. I've got a shot from both directions. Um, you're looking at little retainer's wall on one side and one on the other. But we extended the field out so they're getting ready to, uh, finalize or start grading on that and get the, um, saw put down. Uh, here we have the museum upgrade. We have the kind of the side front entrance there, the Patrick Theater, uh, piece. And then the, um, the center, uh, room, what's that called, Marion? The Galleria, thank you. Uh, the Galleria of the museum. South Branch Library, to the right of this picture, you can see the original building where they're doing some roofing work to the left. Uh, that whole building is the addition. Last time we just had steel erected, now there's, uh, roofing material on top of that. So that's coming along out there at South Branch Library. And these are some additional projects we have coming up, the Hardaway High and Kendrick High Edition Upgrade Project. Uh, we're bringing more to y'all in the future on that. Uh, Phase Three, uh, the athletic fields and then the went and roofing, the roof is on. We're just going through final inspections, um, so that they are leak-free over there.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely. And as always, we thank, thanks, sis, for the East Plus, for which we couldn't have done these projects without, so we thank y'all.
Lots of work going on.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ward, appreciate it. Madam Chair, that's, unless there's any question, yes, ma'am? Cut your mic, Holmes, Kia, Erica.
So my question is, um, the five-year facilities plan. Have we gotten an updated copy of that?
We do have an updated copy of the five-year. We do have an updated copy of the five-year facility plan. It got, runs to, uh, March of twenty-seven, uh, excuse me, June of twenty-seven, so.
Turn your mic back off, hold on a minute.
It is, we can, we can send a soft copy to you, absolutely, we'll do so.
Okay, thank you.
Is it, is it, is it not on our website? Did y'all take it down?
I, I'll have to check to see if it's there. I'm not, we just keep a soft and hard copy in the office. Oh, yeah, you don't want to, it's books and books of that. That's right, electronic, yes, ma'am. We'll ma, we'll make sure it gets sent out, it's good reading.
Any more questions?
Turn your mic on, Ms. Buckner.
Yeah.
Talking about in, in the days of past, when they sent those big old, uh, facility plans out for anybody to come in and look at it, and they were real thick, deep.
But I thought, but I thought it was a link on our website, is that not?
He said it might be.
Well, we need to make sure, put it back.
Uh, nobody but the board, you know, board members did because it was, uh.
No, we got the, we got the summary.
Hmm? No, no, it was, well, we had actual board members that actually, you know, during that time, it was debatable. Everything was such a debate.
Huge document.
So you had to go see so you could anticipate.
Huge document.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Ms. Chambers, we are ready for the finance committee.
All right, first item is item ten point zero one. This is the quarterly audit summary. And, um, in accordance with the audit charter, a quarterly report is being presented as information to the board, and this is coming from the Chair of the Audit Committee, um, Lori McCray. Any questions about the audit, uh, summary is very short. Okay, hearing none, I'll go on to ten point zero two. Ten point zero two is the purchase exceptions A and B. You'll see, um, different, uh, purchase agreements for textbooks, films, slides, videos. Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to ten point zero three. Um, attached are, are renewals. And these are renewals, um, for existing purchase agreements. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, ten point zero four, invitation to bid, our R F Ps. This is, um, from Ms. Bloodworth, and they are asking us to approve the, um, bids that are attached for new computers. Um, after-school program funds are being used for various items, uh, furniture for Arnold Middle School. Any other questions? The biggest thing on this particular, uh, renewal is the three point seven million dollars for the school-based contract custodial services. Board members, do you have any questions? Hearing none, I'll move on to ten point zero five, which is purchase exception E. And this is, uh, purchase for furniture for Eddie Middle School. Okay, ten point, moving on. Ten point zero six is, um, purchase exception G, which is for professional services. And you'll see those attached. Hearing no questions, I'll move on to ten point zero seven, which is a copy of our new budgets. And you'll see one that is attached for, uh, dyslexia screeners from the, um, Division of Teaching and Learning. Ten point zero eight. This one has to do with, uh, let's see. These are budget adjustments, and they are attached. Most of them are for grants. Ten point zero nine are our sole source purchases, and they are attached. Looks like we're getting a piano at Kendrick High School, copiers. Ten point zero nine, I'm sorry, ten point ten is our purchase order increases. And this is just one from the library. Hearing no questions, I'll thank the public for their generous donations. Ten point, um, eleven. And ten point twelve are our financial statements that we get each month. And, um, they are attached for the, um, month of July. They include the East Plus and the capital projects. Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Dr. Lewis, you gonna give us a, you wanted to, to talk about something. I just do want to ask for, um, if you would, in addition to the overage, undercredit students, that proximity, um, learning, how, how that rolls out and how, what it actually looks like? Because I'm hearing that it's like another thing, um, for teachers to do. So if you could just give us some kind of review or overview, not tonight, but just at a, at a work session down the road, um, how that, how that rolls out and what that looks like.
I'm confused, I'll get more clarification.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Tillery.
Um, not, I, this is not to be answered tonight, but I didn't know if we could get any kind of, um, information or backup on how the new sub-program is working, the new third-party.
Substitute teacher?
Then, you know, just, that was a big investment, and if it's working, if we've got more subs, if, you know. And you can do it next week, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be today. So whatever, I mean.
You got the answer?
I can, I can tell her where, I just told, um, uh, Ms. McCray the same thing, so I have to say it to you. We are, we are still in the beginning stages. We're, the, uh, the, uh, hire rate is about the same as what it was when they, they first, uh, when we were looking to bring them on, but they're still ramping up. We've got one more recruiter to get with their team, and then we're going to be talking about specifically when we should start to see the return. Um, and, and I want to get something a bit more solid, but I did expect that there would be a ramp-up period where they needed to, uh, get their three people, the crew that they have onboard. Uh, the process itself is going smoothly. The students, uh, the students, the substitutes did transition over. Uh, the only thing that we're working on now, uh, is that, you know, although the, um, substitute teachers didn't feel too much of a, um, any kind of issue in switching over, uh, we did find some technical things that we're working through E S S uh, to make sure that, uh, long-term subs get the materials that they need when they need them for the length of time that they need them, and that our system captures that properly as well. But we need something from them, so we'll work through that. Is, it, does that help?
Yeah, I guess so.
I'm sorry, when you, if you turn it off, um.
I guess we'll just have to wait until they have their three people in place before we get any real data.
As soon as we finish ramping up, I'm gonna get a solid timeframe when I should expect to see the, uh, return on our investment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chambers.
Um, this is just a quick question. Um, I was looking back at some old notes, and, um, are we required to do a nutritional procurement, um, report?
They're, they're asking for you to clarify with the brow, eyebrows raising.
Ah, I was just looking back a couple of years ago, um, and it came, I believe, from the state that we were required to turn in some type of report, um, and we did it in September, that's why I'm asking. I'll send it to you guys, and if y'all can let me know if we have an updated report or if that was just a one-time thing. It's, um, nutrition, is that you, Travis? Would you check on it? Can I send it to you and you just let me know if there's an updated one or if it's even required every year? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes, uh, very proud of four of our schools. Going to be recognized with a visit, uh, from State School Superintendent Richard Woods tomorrow at South Columbus Elementary at ten thirty. He will be recognizing South Columbus, Fox, and Dawson Elementaries for improvement in reading initiatives and literacy, and Britt David for outstanding achievement in that area. So, uh, we're very proud of those four schools, and the fact will be recognized by State Superintendent, who'll be here tomorrow at ten thirty, and of course, we'll invite all of our board members to attend that. Also, uh, just a reminder that we will begin our, uh, school boundary restructuring process going forward. So we'll be giving you some more information about that near, uh, near term. But just want to put that out there for the public to be aware that we'll be having some community meetings going forward and invite their attendance and participation in that. And just something I think it's important for us to recognize every once in a while. Uh, annually, we go through an external audit that is conducted by Robinson and Grimes. That process, uh, is a very lengthy process. Uh, it starts back in the summer months and goes through, um, the better part of the remainder of the calendar year, uh, for us through December, which you then get a copy of the, what we know as the old cafer. Um, but just want to let everybody know that we do, uh, external auditing on an annual basis that is not necessarily required, uh, it's, it's required in statute. Uh, but most districts, uh, or a lot of smaller districts utilize the state to do that, and if you know, state offices are way behind, uh, in doing that sometimes two, three, or four years, which is problematic from the standpoint that if there is a major issue, you're not finding out about it for two or three years down the road. That's one of the reasons why I'm, I appreciate the fact that our board supports and finances that external audit that, um, supplements what we do internally. Uh, but that gives our, uh, hopefully gives our public a, a good understanding that we are trying to make sure we're being good stewards of the dollars and, uh, auditing those samples, uh, throughout our system and organization on a regular basis. So I just want to bring that to everybody's attention, just once in a while, remind people of that. So, that, that said, um, again, just, uh, congratulations to those four schools, and we look forward to hosting, uh, State Superintendent Woods tomorrow, uh, for that great recognition.
All right, need a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter. Motion by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Chambers. All in favor, hand raised, into executive session. Thank you, good night.